All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm calling to order our City Council Study Session Tuesday, November 8th. If you will please do the roll call.
Mayor Kayleigh Clark.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Amy Lamb.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Howe. Councilmember Kent Trine.
Present.
Councilmember Pamela Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Retuja Endapura.
Here.
Councilmember Rashin O'Farrell.
Here.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Stewart, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you. Next, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, 7-0. The agenda is approved. So first topic, I believe David Pyle is doing our Housing Needs Assessment.
It'll take a minute to promote a few staff here and our consultant. In the meantime, I'll go ahead and get started on the intro slide, which will pop up here in just a second. Tonight, we're here to present to the Council the highlights and findings of the Housing Needs Assessment that was prepared as part of the Housing Action Plan grant work funded by the Washington State Department of Commerce. Joining us tonight in support of this effort is Elliot Weiss of Community Attributes, who is serving as the city's consultant. Also with us is Kelly Hildy and Miriam Leitner from Community Development. Next slide. The stated objective of the Housing Action Plan effort is to encourage additional affordable and market rate housing in a variety of housing types at prices accessible to a broad range of incomes. Traditionally, Sammamish has been a supplier of single-family homes in low-density neighborhoods. More recently, Sammamish has seen an increase in the production of luxury, single-family homes. Although we have seen the addition of some multifamily units, Sammamish has not seen meaningful growth in this type of housing or in other missing middle housing types, such as smaller, single-family homes, duplexes, and row houses. We are here tonight to present findings on different housing needs in the community and to consider recent and current state, regional, and county housing mandates. Next slide. The Department of Commerce funding for the development of a Housing Action Plan was granted to the city in January of 2022 and includes a series of tasks and deliverables. Currently, the city has submitted the Housing Needs Assessment to the Department of Commerce, and we are working toward the next deliverable of a Housing Action Plan. This phase of the grant development of a Housing Action Plan is much more centered on engagement with the Planning Commission and City Council, as opposed to the Housing Needs Assessment, which was prepared by a qualified third-party consultant for the city following the guidelines from Commerce. Next slide. These are the deliverables that are provided to Commerce in accordance with the grant project schedule. Please note that the Housing Needs Assessment deliverable was finalized and transmitted to Commerce as part of the grant requirements. The next deliverable is discretionary on the part of the city and requires recommendation from the Planning Commission and adoption by the City Council before work under the grant is considered complete. Next slide, please. Moving focus back to the Housing Needs Assessment, there are several components that feed into the work done by the consultant. The assessment is a third-party review of housing needs and should be considered a source of information for upcoming community, stakeholder, commission, and council dialogue on how we can make changes to policy and develop programs to support various housing needs in the city. The Planning Commission and the City Council should use this third-party-generated Housing Needs Assessment report to inform dialogue and decision-making on the upcoming Housing Action Plan. The Housing Needs Assessment is generated from the data-focused, independent perspective of the qualified consultant and is an autonomous presentation of information and findings. In this sense, the Housing Needs Assessment is not an actionable item and is instead informational to the commission and council and is presented after it has been completed and transmitted to Commerce in accordance with the Commerce timeline. Next slide, please. Before we move into presentation by the consultant on their findings, we wanted to present a few questions to consider that we hope will prompt conversation. The first is, do City Council members understand the state, regional, and county housing mandates and their relationship with local needs? What stands out in the information presented in the Housing Needs Assessment? And what questions do City Council members have regarding the next steps in developing a Housing Action Plan? Please keep in mind, as we review findings from the Housing Needs Assessment -- or excuse me, these are great to keep in mind as we continue to review the results of the Housing Needs Assessment. With that, I'll pass it off to Elliot Weiss with Community Attributes. Thank you.
Good evening, Council, and thank you for having me. Can everyone hear me all right? Okay. I wanted tonight to just give a snapshot into the findings of the Housing Needs Assessment, which is a largely data-driven and quantitative exercise. I say largely because while there is plenty of data in the document, there was also a lot of engagement that informed this Housing Needs Assessment, statistically valid survey with the community, public survey open to all, community roundtables, and we've got some additional work upcoming to engage the community more broadly in the strategy phase of this project. But the Housing Needs Assessment presented our findings from engagement to date, as well as the analysis of the available data from sources like the Census Bureau and the Department of Housing and Urban Development, among others. Some of the demographic trends that emerged in the data is that Sammamish is becoming more diverse, that it's still a community of families, that families predominate as the household type in Sammamish. And like the county and the region, Sammamish's population is aging. The portion of the population 65 years and older is increasing, and the portion of the population under the age of 18 is comparatively small as a share of the total when compared to data from earlier years. Economic disparities, particularly between homeowners and renters, are growing, and as a result, some residents are at increased risk of displacement with where home prices have gone in recent years. Sammamish is part of a broader regional economy. I know that's no surprise to anyone, but the data bear this out. Eighty-six percent of workers in Sammamish jobs come from outside the city to work, so any other jurisdiction or unincorporated areas outside of the city of Sammamish. And 60% of Sammamish resident workers, so those residents of Sammamish who hold a job, commute to one of these three, Seattle, Bellevue, or Redmond. Obviously, there are resident workers who commute to other cities as well, but the share commuting to just those three is rather large, at 60%. And in the survey results, we asked about some of these commuting trends, as well as remote work trends. Almost half of surveyed residents live in a home where at least one person works remotely. So that pandemic-related trend persists in Sammamish and throughout the region. We looked at data on the housing stock in Sammamish, as well as the real estate trends affecting residential units in Sammamish. And 58% of all homes in the city of Sammamish were built in the two decades between 1980 to 2000. About 87% of housing units in Sammamish are single-family, so it is a predominantly single-family community. Those single-family homes tend to be rather large, as only 12% of housing units in Sammamish have fewer than three bedrooms. And the home values are quite high compared to the rest of the county and the region, with 91% of homes valued at greater than $500,000 compared to 60% across King County. The median sale price of a home in Sammamish in 2021 exceeded $1.8 million, and the data show a really rapid escalation in 2020 and 2021. As David mentioned earlier, there's a complex regional framework in which the city of Sammamish must plan for housing needs. So among these policy requirements are that the city has to plan for and accommodate housing affordable to all economic segments, promote a variety of residential housing types, and a variety of residential densities, encourage the preservation of existing housing stocks so that the built housing units that you have now. You have to report out the actions that you've taken in order to do those three things I just said, to increase affordability, to improve the diversity and supply. Additionally, and similarly to the reporting requirements, is that you have to demonstrate how local policy is linked to these broader housing efforts, up to even the statewide level. The local policy changes that you've made, or how your local policy allows for the development of enough housing units at these various income or price levels. And you have to provide housing units necessary to meet the statewide projections, again, linked to the reporting and the demonstration. You have to show that you have the capacity and that you've been proactive in planning for the statewide projection, or the city of Sammamish's allocation of the statewide So this is a balancing act, and it's a complicated one. We know, based on who lives in Sammamish now, the needs and preferences of the Sammamish community, and of the broader Sammamish community, including workers in Sammamish, that, you know, the quality of the neighborhoods is a chief concern, that there are changing demographics that may necessitate changes to the current or existing housing stock. But your housing policy requirements go beyond that, including housing for very low-income households and workforce housing, even if Sammamish currently doesn't have a ton of the very low-income households relative to other cities across the region. So we'll be moving next into the strategy development phase, or the actual Housing Action Plan, where we identify things city staff can take on in the coming years in order to meet projected housing need. These are just, I call them buckets of strategies, so we're not intending to be prescriptive, because this is a process that is forthcoming, and we look forward to engaging with you and with Planning Commission and with the Sammamish community to decide what strategies are appropriate for Sammamish to implement. But the types of things we could be talking about in the future are zoning changes. So maybe you're taking certain zones that are at lower densities and increasing the allowable densities within them, or rezoning them to zones that exist right now in Sammamish code but allow for a greater variety of housing types, changes to the underlying development regulations that may allow for smaller lot sizes, or greater lot coverage, or additional detached dwelling units on the same property as a larger dwelling unit, requiring certain housing types. So required affordable housing is part of a multifamily project, or something to that effect. Public-private partnerships could be anything from, you know, agreements with developers to provide affordable housing or certain housing types, to disposition of surplus or city-owned land. All of these things are tools being used by jurisdictions variously throughout the region. Incentives or subsidies. The example that I always give for this one, although it's a tricky one for Sammamish, is the multifamily tax exemption program. That is an incentive that many communities across Washington State use, where projects that include affordable housing units at a certain percent of area median income get either an eight- or a 12-year property tax exemption. As I said, that's a little trickier for Sammamish, but we can talk further about that if we'd like. And then other financial tools. There are a broad range of financial tools that are statutorily enabled in Washington that you could consider. And as I said, I think this is a conversation we look forward to having. So this is what the remainder of our process looks like. We've got targeted technical interviews with members of the commercial real estate and others across the community, scheduled for the month of November. We've got community outreach activities that we are planning for and that you'll see on a subsequent slide in December. We're going to use that engagement, as well as subsequent meetings with the Planning Commission and with City Council, to focus in on a list of prioritized strategies for implementation by city staff. We're going to draft the Housing Action Plan and identify metrics and develop tools to uptrack the implementation of the strategies that we do elevate for focus. And then we will take the final Housing Action Plan to Planning Commission and to you as a council for adoption with a deadline of June 2023. These are some of our known meeting dates at this point. We were before the Planning Commission for this Housing Needs Assessment on October 20th. We presented the same information to them as we are to you tonight here on November 8th. We will be back to discuss the housing strategies with you on January 10th, and the Planning Commission on January 19th. Then we'll have a draft of the Housing Action Plan in meetings in May and March, and a public hearing in April with the Planning Commission, and in June with City Council. We did want to just flag some opportunities for further engagement. This Thursday, as part of your comprehensive plan update process, is a virtual housing summit beginning at 7:00 PM. The link is there to register at the envisionssammamish2044.org website, which has been set up to support the comprehensive plan update. And then for the Housing Action Plan, we are seeking input from the community on this list of potential or preliminary strategies on Thursday, December 8th. That meeting will also be virtual, and it is at 6:00 PM. So for anyone listening, please save those dates, and we look forward to talking with you.
Elliot, if I could jump in here, I just wanted to point out that the mayor identified a typo, I believe it's 11:10, which would be Thursday, 11:10. So I think there's a typo on the slide. Thank you, Mayor.
That checks out. Today is the 8th.
Yep, just wanted to make sure anybody listening knows that that is planned for Thursday, November 10th at 7:00. There's links to join on the city's website. Thank you.
So these are the same questions that David showed you before. We'll leave them up here just to facilitate the discussion. That's what I have for a presentation, but I'm happy to take any questions about the Housing Needs Assessment as well. So, thank you.
All right, thank you all. Council, open up to you. Councilmember Howe.
Thank you for the presentation, and thank you for the work on this. What I would love to know is that, given all jurisdictions have to find ways to support these new housing policies or dictums, is King County going to provide us with something like a dashboard that would help us organize our input in such a way that we're not reinventing -- every jurisdiction is reinventing the wheel? To me, it would make sense that it would be, you know, a very straightforward process so that, you know, staff isn't taxed beyond belief, and because we're all going to be responsible with the same types of data to prove that we are hitting our mark as we move forward on creating housing options for our residents.
So I can answer that one. It's a great question, and I think I'll start with the fact that typically, this time of year, as we're leading into our comprehensive plan updates, we're working on our scoping, our budget. We would have already been -- we would have already received the final countywide planning policies from the county that we need to benchmark against. However, this comprehensive plan cycle is unique, and this is the third one I've been through, and this one is unique, because the county has identified that they needed to wait till the state issued a forecasted need for housing, and then readdress housing policies and readdress how countywide planning policies might be amended to ensure that that need was being met on the county level. So we're still waiting for updated countywide planning policies and updated affordable housing targets to come out of the Affordable Housing Committee and the King County Growth Management Planning Council. We anticipate that the Growth Management Planning Council will be done with that work in June of '23, and that King County Council could proceed fairly quickly to update the CPPs, officially update the CPPs. However, we are planning for a worst-case scenario, which likely is December of '23. So we're looking quite a ways down the line, and in the meantime, we're meeting regionally with our counterparts, the King County Planning Directors' meetings. We have subgroups that are starting to form based on different geographic designations. We're in the Cities and Towns Group, for example. And we're also seeing the Human Services side start to consider this as well. I know that in the last PIC meeting notes, I think that Councilmember Lamb provided, there is a discussion with the Human Services groups around these same housing targets, because some of them are permanent supportive housing units as well, and that fits into the Human Services realm. So there's quite a bit of work for us to do. There's quite a bit of runway on this still. We're really trying to get out ahead of this and keep you all informed. It was -- several cities have already completed their Housing Needs Assessment and Housing Action Plans even before the county started working on revised countywide planning policies. And the question was asked by one of the planning directors in our meetings, we already have our Housing Action Plan in place. It doesn't consider any of these bracketed income group directives to build 0% to 30%, 30% to 50%, 50% to 80%, 80% to 100%, 100% to 120. What do we do? And the answer was, well, you'll have to redo a portion of your Housing Needs Assessment, and you'll have to redo a portion of your Housing Action Plan in order to make sure that that is the most current foundation for your housing element of your comprehensive plan.
So it's a tricky dance, that you want to stay in just the right spots, you're not too far ahead but not too far behind.
Exactly, and it requires quite a bit of attention and quite a bit of inter-jurisdictional relationship building. So we've been working really closely with the King County group, the other planning directors from other cities, our consultant, and we're going to continue to maintain those relationships and follow the process with the GNPC, the AHC, and the King County Council until it's finally adopted.
That's great, because that's exactly where I was going to be going with my next question. So thank you so much, David.
Councilmember Endapura.
So I just have a few questions based on the document that was shared with us, the executive summary especially. I think one question that I have, I think it says anticipate future population growth. So what kind of population growth are we expecting in Sammamish, for which we need to accommodate for? And then I think my other question around housing was, you know, when we think about housing, is it -- are we also assessing the people who are coming into this area? Because that is what I think I read in the Puget Sound report versus are we also thinking about people who live in Sammamish right now who might want to move around and have different options? So that's my question number one.
Yeah, a couple of great questions. Thank you. We do not have -- there is not publicly available population forecast data. However, the Puget Sound Regional Council does do an internal population forecast, and the population forecast helps to drive the housing unit allocations. So while I can't say specifically how many individuals we are planning to accommodate, the housing allocation in total that Sammamish has been given is roughly tracking with an underlying population forecast. So I think that's what we mean by anticipated growth in this context. And then in terms of planning for individuals who currently live in Sammamish but who may wish to change their housing situation, I think that's absolutely one of the goals of the Housing Action Plan. And in particular, some of the survey questions that were put out in the statistically valid survey aimed to improve our understanding of what some of those needs may be. So there were a number of people who talked about the need to downsize. We asked about anticipated future family sizes living in houses, and a large portion, I think the largest portion of respondents to that question said two individuals. So we know that in an aging community where individuals anticipate that they may have only a couple people living in a single household, that there may be a mismatch with housing stock built 20, 30, 40 years ago that is predominantly four- or five-bedroom on a large lot. So we want to provide housing choice, and one of the goals, as David said, of the Housing Action Plan is diversity in housing stock. And so that diversity in housing stock should absolutely match the demographic trends of current Sammamish residents.
Thank you. I think there is, under demographic and economic characteristics, it says, I think, two things. One, that I think I'd like some clarification on who all were included as part of Asian, because I think it's a very nebulous term. And so I understand, you know, and it says one-third of the population. So who all were part of that definition?
I don't have the list of countries of origin in front of me, council member, but it relies on the definitions used by the Census Bureau. So ultimately, because it comes from the American Community Survey, that's an exercise in self-identification. You would check the box marked Asian when the survey arrives at your house, and then the Census Bureau would tally those results and give them out as follows, or as was included in the exhibit in the report. But certainly, there's documentation from the Census Bureau about what they intend for each of those categories definitionally. I'd be happy to follow up on that if that's helpful.
That'll be great. I think the other thing that came to my, I think, which was very noticeable was the trend that we're seeing, especially on the socioeconomic side for Sammamish, where it seems like, you know, the disparity between high earners and the low-end under -- that gap is widening. Can you help us understand that, and also, how does that affect the housing needs in Sammamish? And what does it mean for people who live, especially on the lower side of the economic spectrum?
Yeah, well, it's a multifaceted issue, to be sure. I think the disparities in Sammamish are growing, but there are some things in Sammamish that may disguise the extent to which some of those disparities are growing as well. For instance, if individuals who are making low wages in a high cost-of-living setting cannot continue to live here, continue to afford to live in Sammamish, then they may move out. Or there may be workers in Sammamish who know that they are unable to afford living in Sammamish, and so while they would prefer to live in Sammamish, they currently choose not to, or other, I suppose, similar scenarios. So I think it is true that disparities are growing, but at the same time, we see in the data that Sammamish renters make more than renters in other communities throughout the region. So it's a complex issue. I'm not sure that that answered your question, but perhaps if it didn't, I can get a little more clarity on what you were asking.
No, I mean, that's a good start. I think I would like to just sort of understand how that would potentially, you know, impact our, either the housing stock, the kind of people who live in Sammamish, you know, for the long term, right? Like, if we don't have workforce housing, and how does that also affect different services? I think as, you know, as the gap increases, there are different challenges that are not just limited to housing, but other services as well. So maybe that's a parking lot issue. There was one paragraph, which I'm having a little hard time understanding. So it is on page four, I think it's Roman number four, and the paragraph is, "When it comes to housing growth and policy responses, Sammamish must weigh a number of competing priorities." And the sentence that begins with, "In addition, given anticipated job growth in professions with a large wage range and historic disparate impacts of housing policy." I think that sentence, if you can just help me understand what that means, I just don't get it, what that means, really.
Yeah, I'm happy to clarify. It appears, based on jobs data, that the city's going to continue to add -- need to be careful, because this isn't necessarily -- typically, when we say jobs, we're referring to jobs that are physically located in the city of Sammamish, as opposed to, you know, occupational data, which is Sammamish resident workers with jobs being held anywhere throughout the region. So in speaking loosely about jobs, I'm really talking about resident workers and where they are employed, and the wages that they are earning. So we anticipate that Sammamish is going to continue to add residents who earn high wages relative to the region. And in doing so, we know that that has a complex but likely compounding effect with underlying regulations, such as larger lot sizes, historic single-family zoning, which have been shown to have disparate impacts based on race by a number of studies that have been done at the national level. So I think what we're trying to say is that there's a scenario here where those two things have compounding negative effects, or at least exclude have compounding negative effects, or at least exclusionary effects.
Thank you. I think my just last comment is, I think I was really heartened to see that 50%, 51% of respondents who live in Samamish also thought that people who contribute to the economy and the services in Samamish should be able to live here. So I think that was really, really good to see in that survey, so thank you.
Yeah, that was an interesting finding. And just to follow up on your second-to-last question, Councilmember, about the disparities that we are seeing in certain economic indicators, there is an interesting exhibit, I think it's interesting, in the report that does show what 50% of AMI and 80% of AMI would be relative to the median wages being paid in different industry sectors. And there are several industry sectors that are either just narrowly above or already below both the 50% or the 80% of AMI. And so education was one of them that I think was just above 80% of AMI, but again, that's a median wage, so half the people in education are making below that, which allows you to infer that, you know, many people in education are making below 80% of AMI, and likely some of them are making below 50% of AMI. So I do think that it's an important conversation to have about what kind of impacts that can have on your community when those sorts of workers are having trouble finding housing that is affordable at the wages they are being paid.
If you have that exhibit off the top, I think it's in, I was just trying to look at what you were just explaining, maybe exhibit 20 or something, 18 or 19. Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, first of all, I wanted to answer Councilmember Howe's question, which is, King County already has a housing dashboard, so I emailed that out.
Yes, I know that.
And because you asked if they were going to provide a dashboard, so.
They're a different kind of dashboard that actually measured how we were doing against our policies to get there.
Oh, to show us what would happen if we implemented X, how that would affect or rebalance our housing. Okay, all right. Anyway, I just wanted folks to know, there is an affordable housing dashboard out there, provided by King County, and you can look up your city and see how you're doing relative to other cities. A couple of questions I had, because as I understand it, this Housing Needs Analysis is supposed to be a fairly objective look at what we have, right? And one of the, on page, Roman numeral page three, under demographic and economic characteristics, it says here that more than 22,000 new residents moved to Samamish between 2010 and 2021, and I would say that that is patently false. 22,000 people did not move, we moved a line for a big chunk of those residents, so they already lived here. All of Kohani was already here. I don't know that there's really been much of any development in Kohani for a very long time. And so I'm just curious why we would say that when in fact, it's just not true.
Yeah, that's a fair point. I will say, we've tried to be very careful about the language around annexation here, because it is sort of a tricky one, and Samamish has had large annexations, or at least one large annexation of Kohani in 2016.
Yeah.
I do not intend to say that Samamish, I think it is true to say that Samamish has grown, in the sense that the population of people, as reflected in the data, living in Samamish, has grown, but it is also fair to say that a fair portion of that growth has been in the form of annexation, so it's not people moving to Samamish.
Right, and I get that. I just think if we're going to present the facts, I think we need to present it in a really accurate way, to say that the population of Samamish increased this much, this much was from annexation, but this sentence actually says that 22,000 people moved to Samamish, and I would argue that Samamish moved, not the people. So I just want to make sure that we're being objective when we're presenting the data. And even Councilmember Nupure, I think, I do think we have to be really careful with our words, because to say that we want to maintain our neighborhood character and high-quality housing, but in order to accommodate blah, 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 that's basically saying that the only way we can accommodate is by lowering our character and our quality, and I think that is also patently false, and not, I think, the way I would like to see us present that information. I think it's fair to say, you know, we have these things, and we have to do these things, but to imply that by diversifying our housing stock, we will inherently negatively impact something, I think is just wrong. All of the studies that I've ever read say that the more diversity we have, the better our community is, the better outcomes everyone has, and the higher quality of living everyone actually experiences. So I just want to be, I guess I just want to ask, like, is this final? Can we have some cleanup of some of the language to make sure that we're presenting it more objectively, and not in ways that imply things that I would hope we probably didn't intend, but I think language matters?
Do just want to clarify on the bullet with the but in it, what we're trying to do is characterize the survey responses, which are qualitative by nature and subjective by nature. So that question gave several different priorities as options for individuals to choose, and they chose, I don't want to say they, again, I'm trying to be, trying to be very precise.
Yeah, I just think, like, in that sentence, you could say, "And the city needs to diversify its housing stock," or, "And the city must now plan to accommodate housing growth accessible to all incomes." I think an "and" there changes the tone of that completely.
I think the, again, I'm trying to recall the exact choices given in the survey question, but the survey question asked for a choice between those things, and so many respondents prioritize the one over the other, and we're just trying to reconcile the fact that there is this broader policy conversation where the city is subject to certain requirements that may be at odds with the responses given by a plurality of Samamish residents, so.
I hear you, and I'm just saying, when I read that statement, what that statement said to me was, "In order for us to accommodate housing growth accessible to all income levels, we would now potentially have to reduce the character and quality of our housing stock." And I just think that, again, that is not accurate or true. I think we can do both, so I think it can be "and." And I just want us to be cognizant of the language we use. It matters, at least it matters to me, and I would assume that anyone who works in Samamish who can't afford to live here, that this kind of language matters to them as well. So those would be some of my requests, is that if there's an opportunity for us to go through and just make sure that our language is in fact objective, I would love to see that.
I think that's something we can address through the Housing Action Plan, where we can re-center on what we're trying to achieve. So while this is an important step, I would really like to start to focus on development of the Housing Action Plan, where I think most of the work is really going to be needed, and most of our attention will be needed. And there will be opportunity as part of the Housing Action Plan for us to set policy objectives or statements that will help us clarify things like annexation, and things like the collision of the current housing stock versus the state mandates for things like 0% to 30% AMI.
In that, David, I would encourage us to not call it a collision, because, again, that implies somehow that it's bad. And I think diversifying our housing stock, as we see from some of the other information there, most people are looking to downsize, not upsize. And so diversifying our housing stock is actually good, not only for the people who live here, but for the people who work here, who may want to live here, and whom we may want to encourage to live here to achieve other goals like reduction in vehicle miles traveled and other things. So I just want us to be aware of the language we use when we say collision. And I know you're not meaning to intend, but I just think sometimes we don't pay attention to that language, and I think when you're, for the people that we're talking about, it's not what we intend, and so we should try to choose our words more carefully if we can.
That's, I appreciate that, and thank you for that feedback. I do want to also just raise awareness to anybody listening that we are looking at a fairly large number of 0% to 30% AMI units, 1,400 units in the city, and that's something that's going to be, you know, it's a really valuable community conversation to have around how to achieve that. And I think that's one of the things we're trying to do here, is to start that process, to start to have that conversation. Those numbers aren't final from the county yet.
Right.
But we really do want to start that conversation, because when we finally do get those numbers, we don't want to be out of time.
Right.
To talk about that.
And I do love that, and I appreciate you calling that out, because it will be a change, and I think it's fair to characterize it as, you know, it will be different. The growth that we see going forward may be different than what we've seen in the past, and I think that's fair. And I do appreciate all the work here, I just want to make sure as we present the facts that we are presenting them objectively, so I think that's it, thank you.
Can I just add something really quickly? I was just going to say, while the Housing Needs Assessment has already been submitted, we are bringing the draft Housing Action Plan to council and planning commission, so you will have an opportunity to dive more deeply in that document, into the language, and modify and make recommendations as needed.
Thanks, Mary, I appreciate that.
All right, Councilmember O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mayor, and I just want to concur with Councilmember Stewart. When I was going through the Housing Needs Assessment done on page 39 and looking at the findings, that was the first thing that stood out in my mind when I was saying that we had 22,000 new residents move to Samamish, and I think it's really important, and I'm sure it was not done intentionally, but I think it's really important to record things accurately, and to have that kind of institutional memory of how the city evolved and how things came to be. I think it's really important to kind of, when we're documenting things like this, they're documented as accurately as possible. And I think there was another statistic that popped up on the presentation tonight, that 58% of our homes were built between, I think it's like 1980 and 2000, and I'm sure that's completely accurate. But also, when we became a city, there was so much housing development in the pipeline, so I believe I'm right in saying that nearly 85% of the housing stock we have in Samamish was either built or in the pipeline before we became a city. So those kinds of things are worth noting, and for everybody's kind of historical knowledge of how we got here, because in order to find, to figure out where we're going, we need to know how we got here to begin with, so I just wanted to bring that up. And now maybe it's my lack of understanding, and please, please correct me if I'm wrong, and maybe I didn't read the report closely enough, but I was hoping to see more quantitative information in there, in that to see, this is the kind of housing stock we're missing. So in this particular income bracket, we're missing this kind of housing, or people are looking for, X% of people are looking for this kind of housing stock, and we're missing it. Now maybe it's something we're going to do a little further down the line, but I would have liked to have seen, you know, especially when we talk about, and I see it in the findings there, where people are looking to downsize, it would be nice to have some numbers around that, you know, how many people are, what does that translate into units? And I think we may have done that in previous comprehensive plans, when I watched the Planning Commission meeting in October, when this information was presented to them, with the public comment about how some of this information had been in an old comprehensive plan from, I think, 2003, and it would be nice to kind of see, and maybe, like I say, we're going to do this further on down, particularly when we get to the housing options or the strategy buckets, as you were calling them, that that kind of information would inform us as to which one of these strategy options would be best. So I was kind of hoping for a bit more quantitative data, so that's just a comment. And I think, yeah, I think that's it.
Deputy Mayor Lamb? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say that we'd be happy to bring additional data to bear on questions such as this in the coming weeks and months, if that is helpful. There is a challenge just in which data are available, and I'm hopeful that we can glean some insights into the questions you asked, Councilmember, from the survey data, because that's really the only source that we have for Samamish residents specifically about their future plans. And so we've got to, you know, weigh out the response rate and try to determine how far we can extrapolate that to be a community-wide preference or trend, but I do think that there are some valuable insights there that can help to answer the questions for which there are no other better data sources, say, from the Census Bureau.
Okay, yeah, I just think we have a lot of big decisions ahead of us, and the more data-driven these decisions can be, the better for everyone, because, you know, housing, as we all know, matters, so we want to try to get off on the right foot, and if this can be as data-driven as possible, and numbers, and that would really be helpful to me, to kind of figure out which one of these strategy options is the right way to go, or what combination of.
Absolutely.
Deputy Mayor Lamb?
Thank you. So there was two pieces of information that stood out to me. The first, well, the first and the second, was that the concerns of the people that responded to the survey was they were concerned about infrastructure, the stresses on infrastructure, and the second, the change to the character of their neighborhoods. And so in trying to address that, and I hope it will be addressed in the Housing Action Plan, one, a number that kind of stood out to me in helping me understand sort of the stresses on the infrastructure, is that the population growth between 20, from 2000 to 2020, you know, excluding Kohani annexation was 22,000, and excluding Kohani annexation, we built 6,000 units, which is a far cry from what is going to be coming toward us in the next 20 years, which is 2,100 units and a population growth of 6,000. So you're looking more of a gradual trend up versus like a huge leap, and I think that having that data laid out pretty clearly would help allay some of our residents' concerns. And the second one is regarding neighborhood character changes. Is there any plans in terms of, like, I know this would be helpful to me, like, if you have a visual of what housing types we're looking at, or houses in general, that could allay some of the fears? So an idea would be, maybe if we had images of the types of homes that we're looking at, is there like areas in Seattle or in the neighboring communities that have neighborhoods with duplexes and triplexes? And we include that in the Housing Action Plan, that people could go out and do, say, a walking tour, so that people can understand this isn't as scary as it sounds. So just a couple, just a couple of thoughts.
Yeah, very much appreciate the suggestion, and I think we will do that. In fact, I think that's ongoing as part of your comprehensive plan work. I know that they're circulating some images to do some live polling for the event that we referenced this Thursday night. I anticipate we will be using some similar techniques in terms of just getting representatives or representations of development types that are under consideration from the region in front of Samamish residents, so that they have a really solid understanding of what's being proposed. And that was also included in the survey, there were pictures of the different housing types when we asked folks to choose. Now, I think individuals overwhelmingly identified the detached single-family residents, but even those can come in different shapes and sizes and whatnot, so I take the suggestion, and I hope that we'll be incorporating it in the weeks and months to come.
Yeah, I'm hoping like some sort of like walking tour, like if, like in Capitol Hill, there's a lot of duplexes and triplexes. You know, if I could physically go there, and I know that there's a place I could go, I think that would be really helpful, not just looking at pictures.
So one thing that we would definitely want to do is to help understand where we haven't performed in our policies and development regulations historically. We have had quite a bit of flexibility in our development regulations for duplexes, and we've had density incentives, and I've talked to builders about this, and they indicate that they just don't want to build them because the market's not there for them here. I've talked to my counterparts in the city of Shoreline, different market, different geographic location, but they're building duplexes, fourplexes, six-packs, all over the place. I live in Lake Forest Park, not that far from there, and I'm commonly riding my bike up there on weekends with my kids, and I see stuff popping up all over the place, and it fits within the Balkan scale of the single-family neighborhood. And if you ever have a chance, and you're up in that part of the Seattle area, drive around Shoreline a little bit, and take a look at what is taking shape, especially around the Meridian and 185th, and Meridian and 175th areas. around the Meridian and 185th and Meridian and 175th areas, which they're going to have a light rail station in those areas. So it's a little different. But it's interesting to see what they're able to build. We'll put together some, some locations that you could visit with some ideas. One thing that I do want to raise, though, is that when we're looking at 0 to 30% AMI units, we're likely not able to build those in the form of single-family homes or duplexes or even fourplexes or six-packs. We're likely to see the need to build those types of units in, in larger buildings where the cost efficiencies are there. So that is an opportunity for us. We do have some areas where those would be well-suited, near, near, near possible future transit options. And the next conversation tonight on your agenda is about transit. So keep that in mind is as you're thinking about transit in the future, thinking about these, these housing needs that we have and the need to build 0 to 30%, 30 to 50% units is, is, is high. So where would you put those and how would you service those? Think about the whole policy statement. The policy statement that you see repeated, state law, regional policy, county policy, is to in, in, increase the, the diversity and affordability in housing unit options. But there's a second part to that policy in, in, with, with, in areas within reasonable proximity to sustainable transportation alternatives, right? So it's, it's being able to build units that are diverse and affordable within proximity to transit or transportation alternatives. So that's, that's a really important thing to remember. Oftentimes, we think about housing or transportation. But in this case, we really need to keep thinking about those together.
Thanks, David. Councilmember Treeen?
Yeah, thanks, David. Because so, based on what you just said, and understanding the Growth Management Act, and then with new policy that may or may not come down, this council's going to have to make some decisions over the next 18 months, hopefully sooner for the comp plan. But if there's changes by King County, then we're all the way out 18 months. And then we're supposed to sign off and have delivered to them our comprehensive plan. So how do I, how do we balance out this very concept that you're talking about? Or is there a way to provide housing that would be credited to the city of Samamish that would be closer to transit and the service that would be necessary for the density that would be necessary? And I'm specifically too concerned about that 0 to 30 or even the 30 to 50. Because that, I mean, the planning commission is looking at the same question and wondering, how do you build that? Who's going to build that? I mean, unless you incentivize it, and then will those people even, one, will the developers build it? Two, will someone move in? If they were so far away from transit that they can't get to the services that they need without having a vehicle, which defeats the purpose of the density and the transit in the first place. So is there a way, so the question is, is there a way for us to partner with, I would say, in the next four years with, or six, with Redmond? Or by 2041, by the end of our 2044 planning period, can we even work with Issaquah, who would then have light rail to Issaquah, where we would get credit for the affordable housing or housing affordability for the city?
So in one of our regional coordination meetings, the question was asked, can you find ways to fund regional efforts to build units? And would they be counted as, or towards your, your target? And the answer that we got from the King County staff in that moment was no. You cannot count funding towards 0 to 30% units in another jurisdiction or in another location outside of your jurisdiction towards achieving those units. It's, it's seen as, as an essential component of the mix of housing in the region, but it doesn't fulfill the city's need to have policies that promote and help facilitate this type of, these different types of housing being built in, in the city itself.
Any other options that we might have going forward then? If that's not available to us, is there other options? I mean, how do you, what do you do? You put a, you know, six-story, 30-story apartment building down on the lake? Or do we put it on top of our park so that it's close, it's within a mile?
So, yeah, part of this effort is, is trying to find strategies to answer that exact question. What do we do? We, we do have some areas of opportunities in the city. One of the questions raised in the Agenda Bill is what are the city's areas of opportunity? I, I would say that, that one that is not out of, out of reach for us, but would be a really important thing for us to consider is taking on a designation as a Regional Growth Center. I think that that is one that there might be different perspectives on in the community. But if we were to take on a designation through King County, through Amendment of Countywide Planning Policies, to have the city added to the region's growth centers, then we would be eligible for a whole host of funding related to transportation and related to housing. That would also enable us to put together a multifamily tax exemption program that would then help fund 0 to 30%, 30 to 50%, even 80% and above is eligible for, for, MFT programs. But in order to be eligible for an MFT program, you need to be considered or be designated as an urban growth center. So.
But for the next 10 years, we're cities and towns?
Well, I think you can be in the cities and towns category, but have a limited scope urban growth center designation under King County Countywide Planning Policy. So from what I understand, you, you can do both. You need to be very careful to craft the boundaries and, and policies and, and constraints of your urban growth center designation under Countywide Planning Policy and work with the county closely and our regional neighbors like Issaquah and Redmond for, to support us in, in that effort. But it's something that, that could be achieved. It's, it's, I'm, I'm simply laying that out as that is one alternative that this council could consider in moving forward. And we'll be bringing forward more information on that here in the coming months as part of the comp plan and as part of the housing strat, Housing Action Plan.
Had a bad day, and you just made it worse. Thanks, David.
All right, I'm going to go before I go to round two, if that's all right. So, yeah, thank you. I think this is super important as I know, like, for me personally, I really want to be that good neighbor to our cities. So being able to take on that growth, whatever that means. I didn't, the Regional Growth Center, that's super interesting to me. And I would love to learn more about it when we go through the Housing Action Plan. And you did answer my question about when we get those affordable housing growth targets. That will be our growth target that we voted on earlier this year, added on top of that? Is that kind of how that works?
So there are a few different options that are being considered by the King County Growth Management Planning Council and Affordable Housing Committee. One of the options, option three, and I can, if I can share my screen here, what I can do is, let's see. Am I, can you promote me? Sorry. I don't think I'm promoted. I've been demoted. Let's see here. And I wanted you all to see this because I think this is really important for the community to know that this information is out there and for you to have opportunity to review it. Share screen. Let's see. Oops. Let's see. Trying to get the right share up, just a second. There it is. So this is a Tableau dashboard that King County has been working on. This is a representation of draft options under consideration for different affordable housing targets. Option number three is the option that is currently, as I understand it, preferred by King County staff and preferred by the Affordable Housing Committee and Growth Management Planning Council, although I do not believe they have formally adopted this alternative. Part of the reason why they haven't adopted it is because they've, they've been continuing to receive information from the state on different types of housing needs, such as the primitive, permanent supportive housing. And hold on, bars. So this is the, the Tableau dashboard, and within it, there are compare, all sorts of different comparison tools that you can use. You can compare by jurisdiction, you can compare across the county, you can select here the different, and I'll send out the link to this after the meeting. You can see here, Samamish, we can choose Samamish. And this shows, under the different options being considered, the number of units that we might receive as a tar, a target from the county. So under option three, it includes 926, I have to move this window, I'm sorry, just a second. 926 units of non-permanent supportive housing in the 0 to 30% AMI category. Under the, as part of that, we have 558 units of 0 to 30% AMI in the permanent supportive housing category. Then, under the 30 to 50% category, 411 units. Then, under the 50 to 80% category, 222 units. Then, under the 0, the 80 to 100, zero units. Under the 100 to 120, zero units. Under the 120-plus, zero units. In the emergency housing category, 390 units. So this roughly equates to our, our growth target of 2,100 units. The math is never going to add up exactly. So for those of you who want it to perfectly add up, it's, it's not going to happen. So just, just, just want everyone. Just, just wanting to raise this because we need to be aware of this early and follow it. It is continuously changing. Just recently, they added the units related to permanent supportive housing, and they added the emergency housing units. And in doing so, they adjusted the other categories. It's interesting to compare to, say, Bellevue. And in Bellevue, for example, they're looking at 11,827 units in the 0 to 30% non-permanent supportive housing and 7,130 units in 0 to 30% permanent supportive housing. So just across the, by comparison, we could look at Issaquah, and we could see what fits in here. They have 1,086 units in 0 to 30% non-supportive and, and 655 in permanent supportive. If you were to look at Redmond, just by way of comparison, because I think it's important to understand how we fit in here. Redmond has almost 7,000 0 to 30% non-permanent supportive, 4,200 0 to 30% permanent supportive. So it's, you could see, starting to look across jurisdictions. So again, this is where the city's designation in the Cities and Towns Urban Geography Group, you could see the difference because when you look at what Issaquah is required to, to provide versus, and what Redmond is required to provide in Bellevue, those are different categories compared to Samamish. So to answer the question about how this fits in with our growth target, we asked that question, and the answer was, is, is we're not expected to add those together, that we are expected to find a way to fit this within our growth target, our existing growth target. So the challenge is, if we're supposed to build zero units in the 80% and above, that's, first of all, unrealistic because there will be continued, a continued development in market-rate housing. So what do we do? Well, we, we need to look at ways to try to adjust, turn the dials and move the levers in, in the zoning controls in order to incentivize and really try to promote a shift in the building community and what they are providing and what they're building and bringing to market.
Thank you. This is super helpful. I don't know if this also has definitions. I need things explained to me like I'm five. So I don't know if it has like those things you were saying, the PSH, whatever.
Permanent supportive housing.
Yes, that. Yeah, that's, I don't know if that's on there, but this is, yeah, this is super helpful.
Yeah. And I can add more information where needed. If you ever have questions about this, you know, we're, we're finding, we're learning new things about this all the time. We're meeting, like I said, relationship building with King County staff is extremely important.
Cool.
And we're really trying to build those relationships. And also, cross-collaboration with other groups out there, other cities, just to make sure we're working together and trying to find, if somebody has great ideas about how to, how to provide this type of housing, I, I want to know about them. So those groups are really important. Thank you.
Cool. Looks like we have three more hands. Councilmember Howe?
Thanks. This is a hypothetical question, and I'm just curious. If, for example, the Central Washington campus actually took off as a real campus, what would a dorm look like in terms of housing? When I look at the responses that we got back, you know, only 1% selected 400 to 1,000 square feet as a preference. And I understand that. It's interesting that people want to downsize, but then they're really not downsizing that much. But I'm curious if we did something different, like a dorm, where would that fit?
I don't know, Elliot, if you've ever, you've heard, come across that. That's an interesting one. I admit I don't know the answer to that.
Oh, I'm excited that I asked you something you didn't know right away.
Yeah, I, I don't have the answer off the top of my head, but I'm happy to follow up. I know that there's a category in the ACS data that captures student housing explicitly. I'm not sure how that maps to the income requirements at the county level. So, you know, there's probably some research into the available data that can help to clarify this. And then maybe it's also a question that gets relayed to county staff at some point.
Thank you.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, that reminded me of another question I had in the, the Housing Needs Analysis data. It also talked about annexation as a way to meet our growth targets. And I feel like that runs completely counter to what we're trying to achieve as a region with growth targets, which is, you know, we talk about housing. And I want to remind everyone that when we talk about housing, we're talking about people who need a place to live, right? And when we look at what's going on across the region and in the county, one of the challenges we have is that there are real people who are working full-time jobs who can no longer afford to live here, who can no longer even afford to live farther out, right? They, like, they have to go farther and farther and farther. And so I just, I just want to know, is annexation really a justifiable way of meeting a growth target?
I don't have the text in front of me, but I think the answer is no. And also, I think the intent of that text in the report was to say that annexation cannot get you to your growth.
Well, good. Because even, even if it's a small number, I don't, I don't think that would be us following the intent of these growth numbers, right? If you look at the PSRC Vision 2050, they have projections on the number of people that are going to live in this region by 2050. And we need to have enough housing units in the region to meet those needs. And, and that is because we want, I believe, that we all want every human to have a safe and healthy place to live. And so annexation would not help with that, right? Again, we're just moving lines on a map.
Except in the scenario where you were able to annex an area that was within the urban growth boundary, within the city's potential annexation area that was underdeveloped and underzoned and could be brought into the city and zoned and provided city services and built out to a zoning template that the city has in its zoning code as opposed, as opposed to its current condition. So agree that, that annexation in current condition, no, that doesn't meet that.
Excellent.
But there, there are cities like Snoqualmie that are looking at meeting their growth targets by way of annexation, where they have areas that they can bring into the city back. excellent. There, there are cities like Snoqualmie that are looking at meeting their growth targets by way of annexation, where they have areas that they can bring into the city boundary that are within the urban growth boundary, and where they could rezone and apply their zoning controls and see a different type of development take form over time. And that happens all over. I think it's pretty, pretty common in places like Wenatchee or other areas where there's still a lot of land left in the urban growth boundary, where they could grow and, and continue the existing pattern out. Whereas we're, we're looking at in the Puget Sound region as sort of, you know, the wave is going back, back the other way. It's hit the wall, and it's going back the other way, and now the infill, the rezoning, the, the growing up is occurring.
Excellent. Yeah, and that makes sense. I think as long as we're not counting, again, houses on the ground as, you know, adding housing units, then, then that totally makes sense. I think, I appreciate you showing us that dashboard as well, because I think that kind of answers the question of, can we get Issaquah or Redmond to build our affordable housing? And it looks like they have enough of their own to build. I'm not sure that would even be something that would be reasonable. I also think it's really important, as the mayor pointed out, in the spirit of being a good neighbor, right, that, that some of these areas of housing that we don't currently have, and we continue to say, well, we should build that other places, there are services that, that are required that go along with that, that in addition to putting the burden on other cities to build out the housing and to build the infrastructure that goes with that, they also then have to pay for those services. So I think it's really important for us to realize that we, as residents of Sammamish, are creating, just as everyone else is, right, the conditions that create the need for this additional housing and the, and the needs for some of those services. So, you know, we should make sure that we are doing our part to fill those needs. So I appreciate you sharing that with us and showing us those different ideas. I do think it's also important for us to recognize that while we don't have a lot in the city, we do have folks in some of these income brackets, and, and they are, you know, getting around. And, and we probably need to figure out ways to bring them into the conversation and understand what transit is working for them, how is that serving their needs, and where might there be, be the need for more. But I do know that, you know, in, in looking at like the Habitat for Humanity homes, right, like they were placed where they were so people could walk to school, they can walk to the grocery store and things like that. So I think that there are solutions out there, even, even in the city of Sammamish. And when we do build some of that density, like in a place like the town center or other areas where it would make sense to build density, it makes it a lot easier and a lot more cost effective to provide that transit and those other services that people would need. And I think, I think it was Mary Victor who's come a number of times and presented, you know, from other cities around the world where they have built things in ways where they take the infrastructure costs to a fraction of what we spend on a per capita basis with, you know, solid design principles in, in terms of how they design and do their zoning there. So I think there are a lot of options that we can look at where we can actually drive those costs on a per capita basis much lower than they are today. So I'm, I'm excited about this. Thanks.
Councilmember O'Farrell?
Thank you, Mayor. And also the, the community that you mentioned, Pam, they're also on a bus route too. So that's really nice. I just wanted to bring something to your attention, David, and I just wanted to verify that ADUs also are counted as part of our growth target too, correct?
Yeah, so that was a question asked by the Planning Commission, and I initially had the answer wrong, so I corrected my answer. But yes, you're correct.
Yeah, and I, the only reason I bring it up, I just think it's just worth stating that also, just for everybody's edification, that ADUs are also an option that we can use too. And, and I just also wanted to thank the Planning Commission for their work the other night on this. It was an interesting meeting to watch, and they asked such great questions, and I learned a lot. So thank you to the Planning Commission.
All right, I do not see any more hands. So unless we have anything else, I think we're good. Thank you, David.
And we'll be coming back to you with updates on this topic. It's one that's constantly evolving, so you think you understand it, and the next minute it changes, so I apologize for that. We're equally trying to keep up with it, so any patience you have with us is greatly appreciated.
Definitely. And thank you, Miriam and Elliot, and Jackie, I think you're on there as well. So thank you all, have a good night.
Thank you.
So our next presentation is for metro transit service. Looks like Audrey is back. It's been so long.
Good evening, Mayor and Deputy Mayor and Council, Audrey Sarsky, interim Public Works Director. The Transportation Planning Division of Public Works, along with King County Metro, has prepared a two-part presentation for you this evening about transit options in Sammamish. The first portion of the presentation will be led by Metro, and will focus on existing and future transit service in Sammamish. And the second portion of the presentation this evening consists of an overview of the city's planned transit study process, which is planned for 2023. With that, we have a few presentation team members coming on board, and I will turn it over to the city's Senior Transportation Planning Manager, Doug McIntyre, to introduce the team.
Thank you, Audrey. Give me one second. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Doug McIntyre here, Senior Transportation Planning Manager with Public Works. Graciously with us tonight are two metro representatives. We have Brian Henry, who is the Transit Service Planner for the East King County Region, and Stephanie Pure, who is a Government Relations Administrator. They will be taking, as Audrey mentioned, the first half of the presentation, and then Lindsay Channing, who is our Transportation Planner, will help me take it across the finish line. So I just have one quick intro slide here. So we have, again, this two-part presentation, and with really three main points that we want to convey. So the first two are for Metro's presentation, then the third one is for ours. First, Metro will provide an overview of existing and future transit services in Sammamish, and then they will also cover their policy framework, which guides their decision-making. And then for our part of the presentation, we will talk about the planned transit study for 2023, and then potential topic areas to include in that. With that, I'll turn it over to Brian. Good to Brian.
Great, thanks a lot, Doug. Good evening, everyone. Again, my name is Brian Henry, and I work in Metro's Service Planning Group, and I'm excited to be able to work on the east side on planning, including Sammamish. So thank you for inviting me to speak here today. Let's just go to the next slide here. And this is just a quick overview of the topics that I'm going to cover today. And overall, the goal is to provide some background on policies that guide Metro's decision-making, and also then to review the range of mobility choices available in Sammamish, including looking at plans for how things can change when sound transit's two-line opens. So let's just jump right in here. So this slide kind of focuses on three key policy documents that helps guide our work. The first is the Strategic Plan for Public Transportation, and this includes Metro's mission, vision, and goals. And this plan also outlines objectives and strategies to achieve the goals, and also measures to just see how we're doing along the way. So overall, on a high level, Metro's goals focus on 10 things. First, investing where needs are greatest, addressing the climate crisis and environmental justice, innovation and continuing to innovate, safety, which is an important priority, supporting transit-oriented communities, being able to access mobility options for all, and having great service, providing fast, reliable, integrated services, building a skilled and diverse workforce, having financial stewardship, make sure we're using our dollars wisely, and also having deliberate and transparent community engagement. So that's kind of an overview of, you know, what's in that strategic plan. And then there's Metro Connects, and this document is all about our unconstrained, financially unconstrained, long-range vision for service and capital. So this plan provides info about the types of services that we're going to provide, and also what it'll take to provide really great service and the infrastructure that we need as well. And this, this vision looks out as far as 2050, and it also looks at an interim period between where we are now and 2050. Finally, there's the service guidelines. This gets into a little bit more detail about how metro services are evaluated and how decisions are made for adding, reducing, and restructuring service. There's also information there about how service is planned and designed. First, when adding service, we are basing how we do that on three priorities. First is addressing crowding out there. That's not a good experience for anyone. The second is maintaining reliable, on-time service, also really important for people using transit. And then finally, the third priority is to grow service as our budget allows. On the other end, when Metro is forced to reduce service, those decisions are made based on reduction priorities that are related to equity and productivity. But not only those, also things like preserving our last connections, assessing the relative impact to all areas around the county, also minimizing impacts that we might have by restructuring service and other considerations. But just to kind of touch on how we think about and assess equity, our equity assessment is made by looking at how many bus stops there are in areas with the highest number of priority populations. And Metro's policies define priority populations as Black, Indigenous, and other peoples of color, low-income families, disabled people, refugees and immigrants, and diverse language speakers. So that's kind of like a quick touch on, on what equity assessment is about. Productivity is assessed based on the number of riders who are onboard and the miles that they travel relative to the number of hours a vehicle operates. Or an easier way of saying it is essentially, is the service getting well-used and efficiently used? And finally, service guidelines also have best practices for designing service. Some examples of that are things like serving multiple purposes, for routes being easy to understand, avoiding a lot of duplication, and also making sure that we have good community engagement, so we know what people's needs are. Let's go on to the next slide here. So the service guidelines also have an approach to partnerships. In fact, it states in there, partnerships will help Metro move toward its goals and the Metro Connect's long-range vision. So partnerships are definitely important to us. There's two types of partnerships. First is direct financial partnerships, and that's to pay for a range of aspects that are really important to good transit. So, so directly financially supporting things like running the buses, also right-of-way and signal improvements to help buses move faster, better passenger facilities, and also outreach and education so we can increase transit use. The second type of partnerships is regarding aspects of transit quality that a partner, like a jurisdiction, can directly control. So that's like zoning and land use, that's supportive of transit, infrastructure investments that can help out transit, and even direct engagement in marketing in your community. So I want to finish this slide on partnerships just by noting that right now, Metro is experiencing challenges with the number of operators to run our fixed route bus system. And what that means is that right at this time, we're not able to consider new partnerships for that type of service, but we're working hard to increase our ability to grow our service and to restore service that's been impacted by the pandemic. So kind of looking to the future on, on those kind of partnerships around fixed route services. So now I want to get into metro mobility options that are serving Sammamish. And then we'll also look, look ahead a little bit for plans for when sound transit's two-line opens on the east side. So in Sammamish, there's two fixed route bus services, and this map here shows where they go. The first is the Route 269, and that's an all-day route which connects Overlake, Redmond, and Issaquah to Sammamish. And it runs approximately every 30 minutes from about 6:00 a.m. until 6:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. And then the second is the Route 216, and this is very much a commuter-focused route. And it runs on the weekdays, and it runs in one direction in the morning toward Issaquah and Seattle, and then one direction in the evening back to Sammamish for folks coming the other way. So that's a route that is really, really kind of focused on that commute flow. Now I'm going to switch to this next slide and talk a little bit about ridership and how it's been looking on these routes that serve Sammamish, starting before the pandemic and then up to the present. So the reason this is interesting is, and I wanted to share it, is that it's an opportunity to discuss how the pandemic has impacted transit service and how things are beginning to look as we recover. So when COVID-19 struck, ridership and buser operators were obviously deeply impacted, and our ridership fell steeply. And as a result, Metro suspended a lot of service across our system in places where there were fewer equity populations living, and also where ridership was very low. Some of the routes, like the Route 219 that's shown on this chart, it's another commuter route that was fully suspended during the pandemic. But more often, service was partially suspended, meaning that a fewer number of trips operate each day. So as we move forward through time, in, in the spring of 2020, you can see here on the chart, it was kind of the low point, but in fall of 2021, Metro restored a lot of service across the system, and ridership began to grow again, and you can kind of see that trend over the last couple of service changes. However, as we recovered, we, we've seen how people are using transit a little bit differently. And in Sammamish, you can see this demonstrated by comparing the all-day Route 269 and its recovery to the commuter-focused 216. So before the pandemic, you can see these routes carried a similar number of riders, but with so many people working from home, the commuter route has not recovered as well as the 269. So that's just kind of a little bit about trends about what's happening in Sammamish. And as we continue to recover, we are going to be restoring service across the county and, and doing that in a way that's responsive to ridership growth, the needs of equity, priority populations, and also the changes in travel patterns that we're observing out there. So that's kind of a quick overview of how things have been going. So next, I want to kind of look forward. Speaking of recovery in the future, you know, I think the east side is in a good place in terms of looking at that, because obviously, Link Light Rail is coming to the east side, and that's going to be a huge asset for moving people around. And anticipation of that, in, in 2021 and early 2022, Metro and Sound Transit got together and conducted a large-scale engagement effort across much of the east side to understand how communities move around, what they need, and also how we can take advantage of sound transit's Link Light Rail expansion. And we received thousands of survey responses, we worked with cities, including Sammamish. We also had a, a group of engaged eastside residents who really helped us a lot, and we held a lot of open houses and meetings with different large employers, community-based organizations, and others. And high level, what we learned is that people really value that kind of all-day service. They were looking for additional service on nights and weekends, especially with, like, connecting with Link and making sure those, those connections to Link Light Rail were strong and frequent. So where we ended up was a final proposal is now ready for consideration for King County and the Sound Transit Board. So what I am showing here on this slide is some of the proposed changes in Sammamish and the Issaquah area. And so the frequency on Sammamish's main all-day route that I talked about, the Route 269, it is going to be, it's going to be increased in frequency during the peak period and in the evenings. And another key improvement is that that route is going to be connected to Link Light Rail in two locations, in southeast Redmond, but also nonstop all the way to Mercer Island for service to Seattle, Redmond, and Bellevue. So really connecting to Link on, on both sides of the region. And in addition, I just want to highlight on this next slide, while some of the commuter routes will be deleted, routes that are connecting to Link from Issaquah are going to be arriving 15 minutes all day. And, and then- And then also during the peak period, there'll be additional service for that peak commute. And buses will be arriving every five minutes. So in addition to that, for folks connecting to the Sound Transit Route 554 in Issaquah, that route's going to actually change and will be reoriented to travel directly to downtown Bellevue every 10 minutes during the peak period and 15 minutes all day. So there'll be a lot of strong connections to Link and a lot of frequency to get people there, especially during the commute if they need that. So that's a little bit of an overview on what to expect and our plan. So now I want to move on to this next slide to talk about some of Metro's flexible service pilots and that provide additional mobility options for folks in Sammamish. And so I'll definitely emphasize that, you know, our pilots in our flexible service program are really all about learning and developing new types of mobility options. So they're pilots, we're always evaluating them, we're always changing them, and they do have limited periods. But currently, there's two primary types of pilot services that we work with and which are growing and innovating. And they're really different approaches that are customized to different needs. So the first one I'll talk about here is Community Van, but it's pretty cool because Sammamish hosts one pilot in each of these two types. First, Community Van, and then I'll talk a little bit about On-Demand. And the city staff here also supports both pilots in various ways, especially in communications and marketing. So the Community Van you see here is a service where local vans are available for shared trips using volunteer drivers. So it's driven by the community literally, but also figuratively because it's their energy and creativity that guides what happens with that while being supported by Metro and Sammamish city staff. And so just as an example of how that works, the Community Van in Sammamish in 2021 ran 77 trips carrying 314 people, so averaging about four people per trip. So on this next slide, I'll talk more here about Community Ride. So this is a different approach. It's an on-demand service. And that means that a rider can request a trip using an app or a call center when they need a ride. And then a professional driver will be serving that, a specific area where people want to travel. And the hours of this are Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. And the service area for Sammamish is shown here on this map, so you get an idea of where you can go. And so on this next slide, I kind of want to talk about how that's been performing. In 2022, we started seeing indications that there was increasing demand for this service in Sammamish. So Metro increased the number of vehicles that are available on this pilot, and we began a renewed marketing effort with that extra vehicle. So this table shows the growth since we added that additional vehicle, and the marketing was increased. So it's great to see here that there is a lot of accelerating growth, especially in September where you can see the steep climb there each week. And on top of that, we've seen indicators of growth in other ways too, like increasing monthly numbers for first-time trips and then an increase in the number of like active repeat riders. So on this next slide, I'll cover the last kind of mobility option I want to talk about today, and that is Vanpool and VanShare. This is a longtime-running service that Metro does where folks can get together to save money, save gas and emissions, and travel together in a way that's pretty flexible to get to their workplaces or just get to and from a transit hub and have some reserved parking. So you can see that even though we've had a fall in Vanpools due to the pandemic, they're still strong in Sammamish. There's 55 active Vanpools, and they travel to work sites in Seattle, Redmond, and Bellevue, Seattle being the largest destination for folks. So those were all the things I wanted to cover today. I'll just finish on two general things about Metro that are pretty exciting this fall. And that is that first, on September 1st, we implemented something that came from the Washington Legislature supporting Metro's ability to have all youth under 19 years old travel free on buses and light rail, streetcar, and water taxi. And in addition, Metro's ORCA Lift fares were adjusted to $1. And ORCA Lift is a program we have that allows people who have lower incomes to ride at a reduced fare. So I just covered a lot, but now I'm excited to kind of have more of a conversation and see what kind of questions folks have.
And Brian, this is Stephanie. I'll just note a couple additional items. Brian mentioned our strategic plan. We do have a strategic plan dashboard for those who like to really dive into data. So I'll put that in the chat for your viewing pleasure. And then also, Brian mentioned three different policy updates, excuse me, policies, the strategic plan, Metro Connects, and the service guidelines. And I just wanted to note that all three of those were updated and adopted recently by the Regional Transit Committee and the King County Council. So just wanted to note those two items.
I believe staff is giving a presentation next, or are we going as far as council?
I think it's actually a good idea to do questions, and then we'll get into our portion of the presentation if that's okay.
Cool. Thank you. Councilmember Howe.
Thank you for the presentation. That was really helpful. I would love to know if you have some demographic data, given the youth card. For example, maybe you could tell me just how well is that used? Are you seeing an uptick in growth there? If you also have demographic data on the reduced fare card, I'm curious and specific around the 269. I'd like to know if we have any idea if youth are starting to use the 269 to get from A to B? And actually, that question kind of relates even back to the on-demand too, if we have any demographic data around that.
Brian, did you want me to take the fare item? So you can take the last one?
Yeah, that sounds great.
Okay. So we just literally, the King County Council just passed the zero, what we're calling the Free Youth Transit Pass about two months ago. And we are still, to be honest, we're still in the process of handing out those passes. Do not have, we do not have any data at this time. And also because of the transition, I will note, we are asking that students use a pass so we can gather that data. There are some state requirements for data, and so we will be producing that. I'm not sure, you know, the demographics. I'm not sure if ORCA asks people about, you know, what kind of information that ORCA asks for, but I do know that we are going to have a better idea once this program is
Fully ruled out.
Yeah, that we'll have some more information about that. And the same for the reduction of $1.50 to $1 for the ORCA Lift Fare. That was again passed on it. Now technically, that is a temporary pilot for 12 months. The Zero Youth Fair is, it was passed by, that is permanent, as much as permanent can be. But the $1 ORCA Lift Fare, that is a 12-month pilot. Sound Transit is also doing a $1 ORCA Lift Fare as a pilot. I believe theirs is a six-month pilot, and there's ends in, there's ends in March of next year, I believe. So these are considered kind of more temporary measures, but my sense is that, you know, my sense is that it will be popular. But again, we do not have data on those items as of yet. We are encouraged, and also I will just say about the Free Youth Transit Pass or the Zero Youth Fair, we don't want any kid to be denied service by not having a pass. So we are allowing them to flash their associated student body card, a student ID of some sort. And if not that, they're just able to ride. The fare is free for them. Obviously, the reason for the pass is for the data, as you noted, but also because we don't want there to be any conflicts between the driver and the passenger. Anything, most disputes that, negative disputes arise from fare disputes. So we want to make sure that it's real clear. You have a free transit pass, you get on. And no driver has to guess how old youth is. Because I don't know about you, but I'm no good at that. I can't imagine anybody else is as well. So trying to reduce that friction in the future. And Brian, if you could talk about the last item.
Yeah, I'll have to follow up with specific data that we might have about youth riding. But I can say anecdotally that, you know, we, like, just this last year, we got some comments from people who were asking for an additional trip for school bell times. And we were actually able to add a trip on the 269 to better serve the school, I think the high school. And so that's one example. And then we also know that there are youth using the on-demand service, but I can try to look up more specific data, but those are just a couple of anecdotes about youth.
That, it's helpful because just understand trending, just what's happening and when is it happening? And even just knowing, for example, I'm assuming you're working with the schools to hand out the ORCA cards. And so just what the uptake has been, and do you feel like the schools have been supportive? I mean, I'm sure that they love it in theory, but there's that implementation part that can be the hiccup.
Yes, we have absolutely been handing out card upon cards upon cards as much as we possibly can. In fact, I personally was at the, yeah, in fact, I saw Doug there, at the Transit Fair this summer in Sammamish. That was a lot of fun. And we were handing out passes. So yeah, we definitely been working with schools because that's where the kids are. But we, yeah, they have limited resources to do that. You know, I think, you know, everyone's sort of understaffed. So we're doing the best we can and getting as creative as we can. We also in the future, just so you're aware, we also know that kids sometimes lose their cards. So we are looking to, I know, I'm shocked. It's shocking.
It's where their retainer is.
I know. Can you believe it? But sometimes they lose their cards. And so what we're trying to do is come up with other fare media. Like, is there a sticker they can put on their phone or backpack or something like that? You know, that can maybe hopefully be a little longer lasting because replacing cards is a hassle, as we all know. So we are looking into that kind of thing. And yes, it is a team effort to distribute those cards.
Great. It's creative outlets. Thank you very much.
Deputy Mayor Lamb.
I just had two questions regarding the Community Van, the Community Ride. How is the service area determined? Is there any thoughts on increasing the service area? There was a senior citizen that had reached out to me a while back, unable to ride it because he was outside the service area. And then my second question is, is there an update on a North Sammamish parking ride?
First, I can talk about the service area for the Community Ride. When the pilot was set up, there was kind of a process to like assess community needs and kind of determine where, like, you know, what would be appropriate boundaries. And I think this was, you know, just trying to consider like where people needed service. We also, like, as the pilot got going, we noticed and saw an opportunity where people would want to connect to this, like, Issaquah Highlands Transit Center. So we actually extended the service area so that it could reach that key transit hub. So yeah, we definitely look to kind of try to be, like, make changes where we think it can improve the service. We obviously, we have limited resources in terms of how big we can make the service area because then you kind of need more vehicles to like get people to have like, you know, enough vehicles so that they don't have to wait too long.
Thank you, Brian. I can take the North Sammamish Parking Ride question. So I was, or I am the lead on that project for the city of Sammamish. That, just for a refresher for folks who aren't familiar with it, in the ST3 package that was passed in 2016, Sammamish did get one project out of that. It was the North Sammamish Parking Ride. We worked on that for a couple of years closely with Sound Transit as well as actually Metro and Fitz and Spurts. But that project ran into, essentially got delayed. What happened was, at the beginning of COVID, the revenues for Sound Transit fell off pretty sharply, fell off a cliff. They're largely reliant on some unstable sources of revenue. And so sales tax was hit pretty hard, and they were put into a budget situation that was forcing them to make some difficult decisions about their capital delivery plan. And one of the outcomes of their realignment process, which was a very public process, we were involved in it pretty heavily. One of the outcomes of that was that all parking projects got delayed effectively indefinitely. Sound Transit has told us that they will get back in touch if the budget situation gets better. But for now, they've told us the earliest that we can expect that is 2045, when it was previously deliverable in 2024. So quite a significant delay there. But again, we're sort of at the mercy of the Sound Transit Board budgeting process. And the fact that it was a parking project, it got delayed kind of categorically.
So then that's like a real challenge for everybody that lives in the north part of the city, correct? And if they wanted to go into Redmond, for example, they'd have to go south? Is that right, to pick up a parking ride to go back north, to go into Redmond?
If a resident wanted to park at a parking ride, that would be correct, yeah. The South Sammamish Parking Ride would be the only parking ride we have in Sammamish. We do find that a lot of people use the Issaquah Highlands Parking Ride as well. So they might go outside the city boundaries to catch transit.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, plus one on the Community Ride. If you, you know, when you look at the service area map, there's a high school right in the north end, and that Community Ride only gets a small portion of the Eastlake High School contingency. And we've heard from several youth now, right, that they want more options. Unfortunately, right now, Sammamish isn't super walkable for them. And I think one youth that wrote to us said that they're held hostage by needing to be chauffeured around by their parents. So, and as parents were held hostage chauffeuring our children sometimes. So I think it would be great if we could find ways to expand that service area, especially if you're seeing an uptick in that usage. I think that would be another great way to do that. So, you know, letting us know, again, how could we partner to potentially make that happen? I think that would be great. So I really appreciate your efforts. I really appreciate you watching the data. Increasing the frequency, I think, on the route is huge. I know that I used to try to take that route to work, and it only went once an hour. So if I was late leaving the office and I missed it, waiting a whole hour is kind of a bummer. So I do appreciate the frequency of those. And I think as we move forward and are doing our comprehensive plan and our transportation master plan, figuring out ways, I think, to address the concerns that the deputy mayor raised around how do we, how do we get people from their homes to a transit route? Especially with the light rail opening up so close to our city and really being able to get people there so they can get to places like Bellevue and Seattle much faster, I think will be exciting. And we look for more partnership opportunities to figure out ways to do that, to get people onto transit and out of their cars, reducing vehicle miles traveled, all the fun things. And I will tell you, as a family who's trying to live with one fewer car than we have drivers, it is a challenge in Sammamish. So I hope we can start to close that gap a bit and make it easier for folks to not have to have so many cars that really and truly, right, our cars sit around not doing much of anything. What is it, like 23 and a half hours a day sometimes, or 23 hours a day? So it's a really terrible investment for people, right, to own a car because it's mostly just sitting somewhere. So I would love to find ways to help people invest their money that they're pouring into those cars and into things that are more environmentally friendly. Thanks.
I think, yeah. No, I just want to make sure. Councilmember O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mayor. Stephanie, on the subject of the distribution of the ORCA card, I wonder if you consider partnering with the YMCA? We have a Sammamish YMCA here, and that might be another outlet to reach that high school, middle school, even elementary age where kids frequent here and a lot frequent the Sammamish YMCA. They might be a good partner to help distribute those cards, just as an FYI. You may already have thought of it, but I just thought I'd put it out there. And as my family who uses the 269 on a very regular basis, we love that route. My son takes it every day to work. And we use the Community Ride as well, up and down to the library. And my daughter, managed to persuade her to take it to the high school. I feel like that was a huge victory on my part, getting a 17-year-old into public transportation. So thank you so much for the Community Ride and for the free So thank you so much for the community ride and for the free, you know, fair ridership for anyone under nineteen. I think that's a huge success. I just from anecdotally see when I pass Eastlake High School and the 269 stops right there at Safeway around 2:33. And the amount of high school students I see getting on that bus. So I think our teens are really are veiling of that service. So be really interesting to see the statistics when they do come in. So just consider the why they may be a great partner for you.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, sorry, I forgot to mention, like, why don't we, or ask the question, why don't we have an app? Like, if you want teens to use something, give them an app on their phone as opposed to having to give them a card.
Oh, I'm so glad you asked that or mentioned that. Part of, yes, part of the plan is to go in that direction. So in fact, that is more of a late 2023, early 2024 item. We have a whole spectrum of activities in implementing what we call, we used to call next generation Orca, but now it's new Orca because next generation is now. So we're actually really excited. One of the things I'll just note, this is a nerdy technical item that just bear with me. When you have a card, it's pretty quick. It's a third of a second, boop, you know, really fast, right? But when you have it on the phone, it's much more convenient because you don't have to track a card. But I don't know if you've ever experienced this, but it's like, boop, maybe, right? It's a lot, it takes a lot, a little bit longer. And, you know, back in the day, Metro, we were so crowded and packed that any second we could save was really important. So we're really wanting, but nowadays the technology is better. We're definitely see a future where folks will have, they'll manage all of their Orca on their phone, be able to, what do you call it, re-up the money for your card on your phone, do everything on the phone. So that is definitely something that is in the future. In fact, I, I feel like that may even be now. I'm going to see if we have, if there's a Orca, a new Orca app quite yet, or if that's in the future. But it's definitely something, you're not alone in thinking that's a good idea. That's something that our customers have talked about quite a bit.
Excellent. I know the teens would appreciate that. Most of them cannot be separated from their phones, no matter how hard we try.
It's a, it's a bit of a losing battle, true.
Okay, I don't see any other hands for that portion at least.
Mayor, can I just jump in real quick? I'm going to actually put Brian Henry on the spot here. We did get a question, I believe it was last week, a specific question that came in from Councilmember Stewart. And Brian, so staff and Metro staff did discuss this question and we wanted to make sure we addressed it verbally in this meeting. So Brian, would you mind taking the question about a new, a new route?
Yeah, yeah, thanks a lot, Doug. So, you know, I think that like our partnership with with Samamish is already like very like good and fruitful. And we, we work together on transit issues. And, you know, when I think about creating a partnership and like whether it's like adding to the 269, for instance, or adding a new route, I think that the key is to be deliberate about that. You know, and to like look at like what we can learn from the community and like understand the needs of folks for, you know, where do they want to travel? How do they want to get there? And by doing that, we can kind of craft, craft a solution that like we can all feel great about. And so, you know, I think right at this time, that's what I would want to do is take more time to like work with staff, work with the community to understand what needs are and then kind of come up with like some solutions that address those needs. So I think that would be our approach to like considering any ideas that people have in the community, both from council members, but really casting a wide net. And, you know, I'm excited to hear, hear a little bit more about the transit study tonight. And I think that's another opportunity maybe to like learn about what the community needs. So I guess that's where I, where I would start with that. And, and then, yeah, from there, see, see, see where we had. Hopefully that answers the question. I don't know if there are any follow up questions.
If not, we can go ahead and jump into the transit study presentation. Okay, I will share my screen. Okay, can you let me know when that pops up? Okay, great. Okay, so the second half of our transit presentation tonight is going to focus on the planned 2023 transit study. So just to kind of set the stage here, so why a transit study? So we know there's been a lot of interest in this, not only a study, but just transit in general in Samamish for some years. We know there's some opportunities out there. And so in conversations through EIS that we worked on last year and years before that, we really, you know, fielded a lot of questions on transit and thought that we need to do a better job of understanding what we have, opportunities, constraints and all of that. So, you know, in addition to that, we are expecting growth in the City of Samamish. And that comes with some, some ancillary or some, some outcomes that we need to address. That would include congestion, you know, where does the growth go? How do we serve the new populations in Samamish with better transit options, better transportation options in general? And basically, we want to be able to really clearly understand what the problem is and how to address that. We also want to be able to clearly say that, that we have a plan for implementing improvements to transit. And a lot of that will be what we can control in the City of Samamish. What are the projects, both service and capital supportive projects that we can do? That would increase speed and reliability in our transit service. And then finally there, we want to make sure that we do a good job of informing the 2024 comp plan update. You know, that's coming up. That's obviously our biggest policy effort that we'll go through in the near future. And we want to make sure that we inform that and address any policy gaps that we need. So kind of the next logical question then is what is a transit study? So this can take many forms, as I'll explain in a couple of slides here. But kind of briefly, it's just a comprehensive approach to understanding how transit serves our residents and how can we improve that service to meet current and future needs. We really kind of break it down into three components. There's a service component, what is the current and future demand for transit? There's a capital component, what are the investments that we need to make in our system? And then there's the policy component that builds the framework for how we address all of these items. And then one thing we wanted to address before getting too far is how does it relate to the other plans and programs that we have in Samamish? So this is the infamous inverted triangle. We use this in various other presentations. But the idea here is that we start with the really broad items that start with our transportation element policies. And that guides our plans and programs, which are then implemented through our capital planning. That's through the Transportation Capital Improvement Plan, the TCF, as well as the budget. So as you can see, that progression to go from broad to really specific and essentially implement your policies. So the first bullet on the slide there, we want it to align with our comprehensive plan. That means our current comprehensive plan. And then we want it to inform, as I mentioned on the last slide, we want to inform our 2024 comp plan update. It also needs to inform the other plans and programs that we have. That could be something like the System Compensation Plan that we plan to work on in 2023 and 2024. It could also be something like a TMP, which is sort of in that middle band of that triangle. These are the guiding plans that get a little bit more specific from those policies. And then, and then of course, there are the implementation of it by the budgeting. So wanted to also set a little bit of a foundation here for understanding what other neighboring jurisdictions do. So we, we looked at what our east side counterparts do. And so we started with Bellevue. You know, this is all part of the research process. We are trying to understand what the options are and what is available to us to pursue. So the first one we looked at was Bellevue and they did a really comprehensive transit master plan. This is a few years ago, but they focused really heavily on both, essentially all those components that I mentioned before, the service planning, the capital planning and the policy planning. It's a really comprehensive document. They go into pretty, pretty specific detail about how they plan to improve their transit system in Bellevue. And then you have Kirkland and they did what's called the, what they call the Transit Implementation Plan. So this focused much more heavily on the capital side of things. What can they control to improve transit? They did focus on service, but only in the sense of trying to identify capital projects. And then we had Redmond and this one is a little bit older, but it still is applicable here because they looked at a much more kind of a pure transit study in the sense that they were trying to really dig deep on what they had and what they, what they wanted to have in terms of service. They really did not focus too heavily on capital planning or policy. So, so this, I thought was a good way to kind of understand kind of the goalposts or the fence posts on what we can do with transit, a transit study. And then, of course, I wanted to identify that Issaquah is also currently working on theirs. And we've met with their staff, our counterparts over there, and had some really good conversations with them. They were really helpful in kind of setting the stage for what, you know, what we could look at in a transit study. And there, I would say that they were probably going to be closer to what Bellevue did, a little bit more comprehensive in nature. But the key takeaway that I want council members to have from this slide is that all of these jurisdictions are actually planning for light rail stations. That is obviously different than what we are doing. And so I just want to make sure that, you know, that's kind of clear from the get go. They have a lot more transit service in these communities and it's different. In fact, Issaquah is planning to do light rail station siting as part of their transit thing. So that obviously very different than our scope of work. So with that being said, we did want to kind of introduce some transit study topic areas to the council. You know, again, we've done some research on this and tried to gather what we think would be really applicable in Samamish. This is obviously not set in stone. We want to make sure that we discuss this with council to get some input and feedback on what we think should be included or should not be included. Also, though, we do want to make sure that we kind of stay grounded in the fact that our budget request was for $200,000, which we think will get us definitely what we need. But it also is not like the, not going to get us probably the platinum level of transit study. So with that being said, again, the three categories here, the service planning, capital planning and policy planning. Within those categories, so starting with service, we think that it's obviously a good idea to start with the existing transit service evaluation. What do we have out there? You know, Brian Henry and Stephanie did a great job of kind of outlining that and where it's going. But in a transit study, we can dig a little bit deeper maybe. We also want to look at the existing and future travel demand analysis. And what we mean by that is essentially, how are people getting around the system? Where are they going? Which routes are they taking and how are they getting there? So the how are they getting there is what we consider the mode, the mode split. So that is whether it's a single occupancy vehicle or by bike or a bus or any number of modes. We need to understand that and be sure that we understand where it's going in the future. And a lot of that is driven by these. We also want to understand operational performance and I'll get into detail on each in the following slides. As far as capital planning goes, when we talk about capital projects, we want to make sure that we prioritize those. That's really important. I think one of the most important jobs of the transportation planning staff is to prioritize projects for council so that we can understand what is most important, also what we think we can implement and help us be ready for grants if they are available. Also within the capital planning is an analysis about safety and access. That is obviously critical to the performance of transit, how many people can access transit and how many people can do that safely. And then, of course, the key to all this is our policies. A lot of that is in form of community engagement. Also, we can include an equity analysis there. So first with the service planning, the three items I mentioned. So starting with the existing transit service evaluation, a little bit more detail there is kind of looking at a citywide evaluation of our existing network. For the existing and future travel demand analysis, we want to make sure that we match that future envisioned transit service to the anticipated travel patterns in Samamish. And then for operational performance, you know, evaluating how transit performs in Samamish. This can include a lot of different metrics. There are many ways you can slice and dice this. You can look at speed and reliability, you can look at frequency, crowding, fare box recovery. You can look at, you know, any number of things. And, and that would kind of get you a sense of how your system is performing. And then getting into the capital, you know, the prioritized list of projects, we would probably break it down into short and long term projects, but they would all support access to transit. You know, just off the top of my head, you can look at transit signal priority projects. You can look at safety and access projects, bus bulbs, which are the essentially extending the sidewalks so that the bus does not have to exit a lane to load passengers. Lots of things that we can do that are, are in our control of the city. And then, of course, the safety and access analysis, I sort of touched on this a little bit, but are there barriers in the system that are hindering ridership? And then the policy side of things, so community engagement, we know that's always important in Samamish. Obviously, we can look at online and in person events. We've also seen that other jurisdictions have done surveys. You know, all of this is to really gauge the community preferences. What are, well, first of all, how many people are using transit? How many people want to use transit? And then what are the things that we can do to improve that and how does the community support that? The middle part there, policy framework, obviously, we want to identify the policy gaps. This is really critical when we go into the 2024 comp plan update. How do we address that? Are there things that we're missing, you know, first, last mile policies that we might need to address to really set the stage for implementation? And then, of course, the equity analysis. The thinking here is that you might kind of approach this by overlaying travel patterns onto demographic data. And then you can kind of see how, how well we're serving the community and particularly the underserved parts of the community. So with that, I'll just kind of take us across the finish line for the next steps. So our plan really is to adopt this in 2023. We think that that's possible. Obviously, it's going to be probably a little bit quick, but we want to make sure that we have enough work done so that we can understand and inform the policy update in 2024. So we'll start in quarter one with the RFP and contracting with the firm. Then we'll move into the outreach with the community and then initial development of the plan. And then in the third quarter, we'll hopefully have a draft plan probably toward the end of the third quarter. And at that point, we'll probably be able to share that with the public and council and start getting input on that. And then we'll move into the legislative process, hopefully with adoption by 2023. So that's our tentative plan and definitely want to hear what council has to say about this and open it up for discussion. Thank you.
Councilmember Stewart? Yeah, thank you. Again, I'm super excited about it. One of the things, again, this is a personal anecdote, but I, I feel like there are a lot of people in Samamish who may be in a similar situation. The cost of owning a car has gone up quite significantly. And so as we reach out and survey people, are we providing them with data? Like, I don't know how many people, I mean, I think my colleagues would tell me most people aren't as anal about calculating and crunching the numbers as I am. I did a rough back of the napkin calculation and it's about $6,500 a year to own a car. Are we sharing with information? Are we getting, you know, validated data, not just my calculation, on the cost of car ownership? And sharing that with people when they're looking at, you know, their options? Because I think that when, when faced with that information, you may make different decisions about how often are you willing to make your teen take transit? And things like that. And then the other, the other thing I wanted to understand was, I'm glad that we're doing this survey. And I think that that is a, a lot of information for us to include in our plans. And we're also looking at like the housing that we're going to have to do. So how will we incorporate those needs, right? As we look at the different types and diversifying the types of housing we have and the needs of those people who don't yet live here? Or maybe we'll be downsizing to move into some of those homes. How will we incorporate that into our plan and into our proposals? Because I think it's really important that we don't put a plan together without thinking about that future. And when we look at, at things like, you know, if we develop in the town center and we start to build out more units in the town center, what will the needs of those units be? Especially if we do things like provide less parking, which will hopefully encourage fewer cars. So is that something that, other than just the survey that we have, a way of collecting that data or looking at other analyses to use that as part of our planning process?
Yeah, absolutely. We'll use as many information sources as we can find to inform this plan. You know, we don't necessarily have data on the cost of car ownership, but I think that there are sources out there that we can get that information from. But yeah, all of this. Um but yeah, all of this absolutely will be part of um how we understand the community preferences and what we can do in terms of um increasing transit ridership.
Okay, because I want to make sure if we're looking at increasing the number of people who will live here who fall into different socioeconomic categories, right? Zero to thirty, thirty to sixty or thirty to fifty, fifty to eighty, um those groups will potentially be more likely to ride transit because they will potentially be less likely to be able to afford to own a car. And so those are groups that are very much underrepresented today. But if we go forward with um some of the housing plans that we're hearing, we are likely going to have to go forward with from King County, we need to incorporate that in our transit plans. And that, I think, is part of those services that we need to be planning to provide for some of those demographics. Thanks.
Councilmember Howe?
Thank you, Doug, um for that presentation. And my question has to do with timing of the of the study. I support the study, first of all. But second of all, I thought I saw that in Q two of 2023 is when you'll be going out to get public opinion. And it seems to me that that it's going to be tricky to try to figure out that hybrid work model, because that will still not be figured out by Q two of 2023. So how are we going to be able to forecast into the future a bit about some of our needs? But we're not really sure what's gonna, what that's gonna look like.
Yeah, and I think you're identifying the problem that we sort of always deal with in planning, which is that there's always an evolution um that that's happening. And I think that's uh, you know, I always talk about the planning process where you sort of um you define the problem, you develop alternatives, you pick an alternative, you implement it, and then you monitor it. And I think that that process is something that we should be doing with everything. And um you know, if we miss the mark and we find we're monitoring that, you know, we're we're not, we're not um accurate, then I think that it is time to amend something or revise or update something. Uh as far as the COVID impacts and the work from home hybrid situation, we did uh try to get our heads wrapped around that um in the early days of of uh the EIS. So we did um do traffic counts at all entry and exit points to the city and really with the eye towards trying to capture commute trips. And it did drop off pretty significantly, as you can imagine, um in the early days. And then we did it again. Uh I believe it was January of 2021. And then we did it, um well, I can't remember the dates now, I'm not great with dates.
Yeah, that's okay.
We did, we did do it twice. Uh and then we found that it did, it did come back, but it sort of stabilized around. I think there was a, we were seeing about a 15% reduction in trips. So um that uh didn't, you know, we can definitely check that again. Um but we did try to get some multiple data points so that we can understand that a little bit better.
Okay, thank you.
If I could add on to that, too, we do collect our annual traffic counts every year in April and May. So we'll be pulling from a variety of data sources as we put this plan together. And then to make sure that, as I've mentioned, it informs the comprehensive plan.
Well, and I'm assuming, too, that there's going to be just in general, other studies that are being done that you'll be able to leverage for just trending information if nothing else.
Yes.
Yes, that's that's correct. Thank you, Audrey.
Councilmember Trine?
Thank you, Mayor. Um Councilmember Howe uh nailed that last one there. So that's a good point. I agree with that. Doug and Audrey, don't, don't bring me back anything about the cost of how much it costs me to have a car or two or three or a truck or a service truck. That's a waste of your time and this uh council's money. There's or excuse me, the residents' money on a study. So and I'm not interested in looking at a transit study similar to the last one we did, and the result of it was uh a popularity contest. So please, don't, don't do that. So my suggestion would be that you take a transit study and you get transit professionals, and you have them look at the data that they can get, as Councilmember Howe said, the studies that have already been done and the data that's already out there, and then the data that we've collected for the city specifically, and then put together a transit study that would bring, that you could bring to us in a timely fashion so that we could actually uh have that particular study impact what we're doing and the decisions we're making for the comp plan. And then what I think Councilmember Stewart was trying to say was that there are puzzle pieces for our comp plan and one of those being housing. And it is impacted by transit or transit is impacted by housing. It also impacts the environment and other issues that are other sections in our comp plan. So I really don't need the study to tell me about housing. What I need the study to show us is how do I take a rural uh transit system that we currently have and how do I move it forward in the best possible way? So if you're going to do anything, I mean, study the choke points if we don't have that data already. And then we want to look at connectivity. How do we have system completion? So if the study isn't going to do something that's going to tell us about how we're going to complete these systems so that by 2024, we have an idea of how are we going to access the light rail or uh in Redmond? Or how do we uh access uh light rail or even I-90 in a fa- uh more efficient way in in the near future by 2044? So I don't know if that's clear enough for you, if you need more clarity as to where I stand and what I would expect from that. I I think your price may be too high. Two hundred thousand seems like a lot of money to go and collect the data that's already been done by other agencies. So seems like a a pretty high price to be paying. Um unless somehow uh city manager, I'm unaware that the 300,000 that we're paying for the comprehensive plan uh consultant can't do some of this work as well. If that's the case, then maybe the $200,000, and I'm just not clear as to, you know, I I'm just not clear of the value of spending $200,000 on a transit plan when other people have done a lot of the work and we just need to go gather that and put it together. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um I don't have any other hands. Cool. Thank you both. Or how many are there of you? One, two, three, four, five? Thank you, everybody. Um really appreciate it and look forward to seeing this in quarter one.
Thank you all very much, and thank you to our metro folks, Brian and Stephanie. We really appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you both. See you all.
Thank you. Have a good night. Thank you.
Thanks.
Nice evening.
Um so next up is public comment. Um surprisingly, no one is in the room, so let me know if anyone is online.
Um if anybody would like to give public comment, um please raise your hand. I see two people that have raised their hands, and I'll promote them in the order that they have raised their hands. One moment.
Hi, this is Mary Victor. I've lived in Sammamish 22 years. Um thank you for the excellent presentations tonight, the very good um discussion and great input from council and the opportunity to speak. Um I just wanted to talk about a few things mostly related to the housing. Um first of all, in the packet on page seventy seven of ninety seven, um there's some input from a senior in high school. His name is Vincent Rivera. They actually, I think, put in a block of one of his comments, and he talks about how you need to develop and that you need to put things in center places and it will be cheaper overall. So I think it's a vote for that. We really need to look at what we can and should put in town center and sooner or than later. So I won't cover what he did because um that's the only one I've read of his, but apparently there were multiple, but it's very worth reading. Um also behind me is a picture of the Missing Middle, which is uh housing that Daniel Paralack, if you've ever gone on and seen any of those videos online. Um Missing Middle housing is things that are compatible with single family housing. For example, if you take a duplex, um that's building two units on the same piece of land, so you're halving the land cost, which is one reasons why duplexes are important. But you have triplexes, quadplexes, sixplexes, that um David Pyle was talking about earlier. I have seen some of those getting built over in Duval, Washington. Um they're on Big Rock Road, and they have some very, very nice duplexes that are one and two story and three story. Um they do have some quads that are very nicely done. There's a lot of different housing going on in there. So I like what um Amy, Deputy Mayor Amy Lamb, had been talking about, being able to know places to go and where to look if you could drive around or walk around. Um I did want to talk a little bit about our local needs. Um it says right in the beginning, I think in the executive summary, that the amount of seniors and people that want to stay, that's really not captured um with the with the other data and what they're doing. It does talk about being an aging nation, and we are not only that in Sammamish, but there are trends from twenty ten to twenty twenty in the census actually nationwide that you're going to have a lot more older people and not as many younger people. Um the numbers for what Klahani is eventually do pan out if you read the whole document, but I agree that it seems a little bit misleading at the beginning. But it sounds like that would be fixed in the next step. And then Pam Stewart had actually brought up uh material I've sent in before. Um I grew up in Bozeman, Montana, where I grew up on a farm and my father taught at Montana State University. And um Bozeman is about the same size as Sammamish, particularly when you do the triangle area around it with Belgrade and um Gallatin Gateway, which goes to Yellowstone National Park. And um they did a study called the Triangle Plan where they showed fiscally efficient is like a center town town center. And then they did the villages where you connect different places that um people go to shop and work. And then they did the sprawl, which costs you the most, and roads and sewer, which relates back to um the Vincent comment from the high school kid that wrote in. So I will try to email that tonight just so you have it. And that's my three minutes for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
I will now promote the next caller. Paul Stickney?
Good evening, City Council. Paul Stickney, Sammamish. There are some structural issues I see in this housing needs assessment. Specific local housing surplus and shortage gap numbers are missing. There appears to be far more policy leading than appropriate. Discussions on economic AMI segments are mostly missing, focusing too much on regional housing needs as compared to the far larger internal housing needs. There are six growth pales that need to be addressed for a community. Two are external, our share of regional growth and our share of regional affordability at 80% AMI and lower. Four are internal, zero to 80%, 80% to over 500% median income, workforce, and all the demographic needs. These four are far larger than the first two. Another big issue, in my opinion, is being off base with the order of tasks. A a proper order, in my opinion, would be to get data on all local internal housing needs first, then contrast different ideological views with level setting facts, then do surveys, then have the community hash out in open forums which set of land use directions and consequences are most uh needed or wanted by the community. Set that land use course and then negotiate a growth target based on suitable current and projected local and regional housing needs. A couple misleading numbers in the HNA that I saw saying Sammamish added 11,000 units from 2000 to 2020. Well, in fact, Sammamish added about 3,200 units, 4,500 were annexations and 3,500 from King County Pipeline at incorporation. Uh another makes it sound like Sammamish has 85% of households with uh children. In fact, this is not accurate. As of 2020, Sammamish had 55% of households with one child or more under 18, and 45% of households had no children. Another example is saying Sammamish had a 3.3 uh growth rate. Well, if you took out annexations, that would be 2.4%. And if you took out King County Pipeline, it would be 1.3. Here's the bottom line. The housing needs analysis and the growth target are not informed by local and regional current and projected housing needs. Get this missing data, reconsider both. The consequences are too great not to. Last week, I gave a public comment on on a holistic solution. Accurate data on all internal needs, past and present, is needed for a win-win, non-zero-sum game solution where everyone and everything stands to gain in our community. Appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you.
That completes uh public comment tonight. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much, Lita. Um lastly, we have a um almost city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor. Lita, if you would promote Mike. Council, we uh the Sound Cities Association nomination deadline is on Thursday. And so we wanted to make sure that council was on the same page about which council members were going to apply for which position. So I've asked Mike to join us really quickly to go through what has been submitted thus far. And for council, I mean, I think there's just one uh spot where we have two council members. So Mike, take it away.
Yes, thank you, Scott. Uh good evening, Council Mike Suggs, supervising management analyst for the city mayor's office. Uh I missed Scott's introduction there and the transition over to panelists. I'll just briefly probably recap a lot of what he just said. There are 25 regional committees with seats available for next year, and applications are due to SCA by 5:00 PM this Thursday. Uh so we wanted to write a little time tonight for you all to discuss your preferences. An important thing to keep in mind here is that only one council member from our city may serve on a given committee. Uh so if more than one member applies for the same committee, SCA will not choose between the two, and it will result in neither being appointed. Uh so we need to make sure that only one council member is applying for each committee. Uh last week, we sent an email to you all that they linked to more information on the committees and also a spreadsheet where you could list your preferences. And I will go ahead and share the um spreadsheet. Now, I'll give you one moment. So uh yeah, keep in mind that there is no requirement that you serve on an SCA committee. This is purely voluntary. You all serve on a variety of other regional committees in addition to your council duties and personal lives. So it's certainly a lot to take on. The four members who listed their preferences in the spreadsheet are shown here, generally in order of preference. And there were only two committees that had the interest of more than one member. That was the Growth Management Planning Council, GNPC, as well as the Growth Management Planning Board, GMPB, uh shown in highlight here. Both council members, Stuart and Trine, listed that among their preferences. So that should be resolved before you all submit your applications. And uh with that introduction, I will go ahead and hand it over to the mayor for any discussion on this topic.
Great, thank you. Um so if Councilmember Trine, if your uh priority is GNPC and Councilmember Stewart, if yours is GMPB, is that, does that work for you all? No?
So I get the GNPC?
Well, it looks like that's your priority one.
Yeah, it is, for sure.
Yeah, and then Councilmember Stewart, your priority two is GMPB?
I'm good with that.
Cool, does that work?
Um I I have a point of, I just want to clarify. Um do we know, first of all, I think we have time until Thursday to to kind of look at this sheet. So I was wondering if I could get clarification on what time the these meetings are. Is that set? Is that something that changes?
Mike, in the, in the link, I believe that there are descriptions of the committees and and the time and days that they meet. Some are in the afternoon, some are in the evening, but it just depends on the committee.
Oh, I have to go and look at each.
Um but that being said, yes, we do have time if anyone else is interested. So I don't know if we need to resolve this GNPC slash B this evening, unless anyone else is interested in either of those. Councilmember Napu Ray?
Oh, um yeah, I would like some time to just look at the meeting uh times and then just fill that out. So that, so I I would request that we wait maybe a little later. Does that work for everyone?
Yeah, I think we would just need to decide because they're due Thursday, so we don't have any other meeting before then.
So we have to vote today?
Yeah. Well, I mean, just for those two, I would think, unless you're interested in neither of them, um, the rest would be probably fine, I would think. But I think those are the only two that's like a discrepancy right now.
And just for clarification, Mayor, if I could, Mike, um, I believe you only put up the committees that a council member put a preference for and there are actually 25, I believe, that have openings. So there are others beyond this group if you have interest in one of those. Um, one thing we could offer between Mike and I is if the one comes in and we see a conflict, we could email council out and have you, um, send it back directly to us, uh, rather than to each other to say whether or not, if there's a conflict, we could try to work that, help you work that out between now and Thursday, recognizing that the application is due on Thursday. So kind of probably by tomorrow evening might be our, uh, kind of our time window. I would also just remind that, you know, you, you all are potentially competing against council members from every other city who are putting in an application. So, uh, the application is no guarantee that you will get seated, particularly for some of the, the committees that are higher profile, like regional transit.
Cool. No, I appreciate that. So, um, we could say tentatively GMPC, Councilmember Trine, tentatively GMPB, Councilmember Stewart, unless you get anything conflicting between now and Thursday. Councilmember Howe?
I was just going to say too, that I've been asked to, to take a look at a couple of regional councils too. So, um, I just haven't got them here. So flood and regional water are two, for example, that I've been asked to.
Cool.
Step up for. So, um, I think it's, I think it behooves all of us to take a look at our current responsibilities because right now I believe I'm the arch liaison, which is different than the, uh, housing, I believe. Affordable housing, yeah, it's different, right?
And you could do those, I just put multiple on there so that people just knew what my.
Okay. Yeah, and so definitely, um, please, yeah, take a look between now and then probably tomorrow evening or, because Thursday is two days away. So by tomorrow evening, if there's nothing conflicting, then we'll be good to go with this. And then if there is, you will email us?
Yes, and, and if you just let Mike know, just you can drop it into the spreadsheet that he sent out. It's a Google Doc, I believe, which will automatically update. And then we will reach out only if there is a conflict.
And one last question, did they need to delineate if they wanted to be a member or an alternate? Or is that the SCA picks, right? Okay, perfect. Do I have any other?
And then we submit the application ourselves.
Yes, yeah. Cool. All right, I think that's it. Oh, does anyone else have anything else? Yeah.
I'd just ask one last thing. Could I go ahead? I don't know if anyone is looking to serve on the same committee as I. If I could start preparing my application, would that work too?
Yes, definitely. I definitely support everyone that is on here. This looks great. And thank you all for stepping up. Yeah, do we have any other? I know we have Eastside Fire and Rescue Board meeting tomorrow instead of Thursday and Chief Clark's retirement celebration right before then. I don't know if anyone had any questions. It's a pretty typical meeting. Go ahead.
No, it's a, it's a slightly separate item.
Oh, yeah.
The strategic plan is in that.
Yes.
So if anybody has any comments now would be the time. We won't finalize it tomorrow, but we'll have the discussion tomorrow. So if we wait till the next month to bring in comments, that's generally a little bit late. So if you have a, a chance to look over the strategic plan, if you have any questions or comments, please try to get those to us before the meeting.
I also have a SCA Public Issues Committee meeting tomorrow and there's three topics of, for discussion. One is the SCA legislative priorities and cities will be sharing theirs. I've reached out to staff and I'll be, um, sharing what we tentatively have. There'll be a discussion on King County homelessness by year plan. And the last one is a discussion on HB 1799 in the King County Replus, um, Plan, which is basically, um, diverting, um, organic materials from landfill. And that'll, um, that will come back to council, um, on our agenda December 12th.
And just, uh, just for the general public, a reminder, um, Friday is the observed holiday of Veterans Day and so City Hall will be closed Friday. And so we will not, services will not be open, just a quick reminder.
All right, thanks, everybody. I will, uh, does anyone want to adjourn or does anyone have anything else? All right.
Move to adjourn second.
All right, it's been moved in second and all those in favor say aye? Aye, opposed? All right, 7:00, we are adjourned at 9:05. Not bad. Thanks, everyone.